Okay, I'm officially calling to order the February 4th meeting, 2020 meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee. And thank you 1629 Studios for filming us. Let's start with public comment. I don't see any public others in the public that's coming to tell us this here.
I have no comments.
Well, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Chairman's report.
Oh, chairman's report. Uh, thank you. It's been very quiet. I have nothing. No news is good news. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
We didn't receive them.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I didn't think I read any of them.
No, Gail sent them to me, but they, then I didn't get them.
In a packet?
In a packet.
Okay, that's fine. We'll do it, uh, we'll do it next time.
Nope, we have the new seventh. You sent them.
You and Rachel.
Yep.
Okay, but we didn't see them.
They will all come together as a packet.
Should we review both?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's 128 and 17 for next time?
127.
No, 17?
17.
Yeah.
And Gail, the only quick thing on the meeting, well, is that the high school is, the acronym is incorrect. But, yeah, we can do that next time.
Can we just mail it up and then read it into the record? That way they're sure you can remember.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Unless, meeting minutes of 128 and 17, which we review in our next meeting. So do I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Subcommittee. Elementary facilities.
I don't think we had them before. We didn't have a meeting since then.
It's been quiet, huh?
Is that when our meeting is?
Okay. Finance committee. So we met on Friday, and the big news there, I'm not gonna steal the spotlight. The big news there is that we found some good news in the budget. So, I won't say anymore, because I don't want to steal obvious thunder. But it is very, very good news. Let's see, we talked about a couple of other things. Talked about the Eagles Nest and Turf Fields. Just update, I mean, nothing that we haven't already talked about. It was really basically spending a ton of time on the budget and the news with the budget. Right, Annie, did I miss anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would, when we talk about, do you want to talk about, right, the kind of the balloon we kind of floated about?
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about that now? Or do we want to talk about that during budget?
I think we should talk about that during budget.
Okay.
Because that, that's kind of the whole crucible matter.
Yeah.
So, very good meeting. We spoke briefly about the lease. I think there's been some question about, I think it is to either expire in 2020 or 2024. Depends on how you read it. And I think there is a question about who exactly owns what. Because I think Essex wants to further define that. But that we're gonna talk about that in a future meeting, because I think it really is up to attorneys at, at a point at which it becomes an issue, and it's never really going to become an issue. So, it's one of those circuitous conversations that you can go on and on and have. So, without further ado, policy. Eric and Rachel, anything?
We have no kind of meeting. We need to probably discuss a little later.
Do you talk about maybe doing pre-meeting meetings? So if you want to start on 3/3 with the NASC list of policies, which we've got, you can maybe convene up here, right?
Okay. And negotiation team. Very quiet. So we're all focused on the budget.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, please.
On the building committee, just we have, just a reminder, the Memorial Walk Through on the 24th, right?
Oh, okay.
So if anybody wants to come.
3:30?
3:30.
2:24 is it Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you just said before? It's 2:24, 2:25.
Yep, 2:24 at 3:30. Great. Is that kind of like a status, like here we are and?
It's physically, go look at the building. Put a hard hat on.
The new one?
Walk through.
Yeah. Oh, I am all over that.
Cool.
Just for the hard hat. Okay. Uh, great. Let's move on to superintendent's report. Pam, your goals update.
Before I launch into goals update, I just wanted to give an update on the student reporter. We found a glitch in the program, which is, we have a basketball player who is the student reporter.
Okay.
So every Tuesday night, there is a game.
Yep, Eric Tryton.
So, um, they're working at the high school to find us a junior with a better, with a schedule that better aligns to our schedule.
Okay.
And then they can tag him for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So, we kind of under, what, why, why he was not becoming available during winter season.
I like that. He will sort of have the junior under his wing for a little while?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have busy kids in this school, so I feel like it doesn't, you'll never really find a kid who can come to every meeting. But we do appreciate their attendance. It's helpful.
So hopefully for 3/3, we'll be back on track.
Okay, terrific.
The goals update, I can do it fairly quickly, because I've been giving you snippets of things over the last couple of meetings. To the question of the negotiation team, my part, one of my partners in crime is here tonight. We need to set the schedule, and we've set it as a agenda item for our planning sessions to kind of figure out how we want to approach the TA contract and what that schedule might look like. As I put in my notes, I think we're a little bit at the whim of, we're gonna pull Meetup and the rep into that, so we're trying to board a lot of schedules to get going. I'm not anticipating, there's, I may be wrong, but I don't think we have huge financial hills to climb with the contract. I think a lot of it's around working conditions. But if there are any financials, it'll have to be for FY '22.
Okay.
At this point, because we're closing out the FY '21 budget, and they're already budgeted all non-Meat at two and a half, consistent with the teachers. So I think that, I'm hopeful that that'll be an agreement for this year. So that is hopefully going to be second half of the year work. I did a bit of an update last time, that some of the details are in here, on the strategic planning vision of the graduate initiative. We're kind of coming up on Community Engagement Month, beginning after February vacation and running through the end of March. I have a survey, just circulated, came in today. We just need to take a look at it and give it out to this group, AC, and meet a president to take a look. That will go out to full community staff and students for feedback, and that feedback will be consolidated by Creative Ed Foundation, who will be leading our focus groups in a World Cafe style, which is kind of a robust, it gets people up, it gets people moving. I can bring a little description of it next time. But in a World Cafe style feedback session, we're targeting the week of March 30th. I hope to have those dates lined up by the end of this week. So, that is in full motion. We were able to pull together the vision of the graduate template through the fall. Trish Palisi took the lead on that. Julie worked with her. We did some NASC work. Lots of input from teacher, staff, and students. So that piece has been given to our, our team at Creative Ed to kind of drive our discussions, and it's been incorporated into the survey. So that's in play, and that's, we're optimistic that we can hit all of our deadlines. And it will culminate in a summer session, look for a doodle before February break to kind of identify what dates were available, to bring this group, the administrative council, and the meet of presidents together to go through the findings and create some long-term goals. Any questions?
Yeah.
We actually, only one meeting, but it was a meeting.
We finally rebooted the wellness committee.
Oh, good.
That's been kind of a standing goal for some time. What we've identified, what we're going to try to do is go through the CDC's School Health Index as a way of doing a needs assessment and keeping us focused on some tangible outcomes. I think we're really just searching to identify, in this next few weeks, what our mission and vision is for the group. It's been different things over time. We've got folks on it. Joanne is one of them, who had historically had a role in the group, and we've kind of spent some time talking about what it was, what it possibly could be. So, the group is together now, looking at a vision for the future. But we kind of see it as an opportunity to create an umbrella for all the social-emotional initiatives that are going on, health, PE, nutrition, home for a lot of pieces that don't necessarily have the one direct overseer. So that is in play. Something I've mentioned a couple of times throughout the fall is, we have been invited to participate in the Essex County Learning Collaborative, which last, had a cohort last year. It's in its second cohort this year. We're in there with Andover, Hamilton Wenham, Saugus, Essex Tech, and it's just a group of educators that are coming together, and it's all different shapes and sizes. Some group, some are mostly teachers, some are department heads, some are principals. Our group is a kind of a combination of the administrative team, who's going out and using it to work in parallel with the strategic planning initiatives. And what we do is, it's a collaborative where we're going to benefit from the tower grant to receive professional development for key areas, the areas we identified and listed on here. We are looking at communications, social-emotional learning, new models of learning, which syncs up really nicely with the vision of the graduate, and also equity, which is, we have yet to define, but has, you know, deals with everything from access to diversity. So that's kind of in, that's in play. And then the last bullet is really about the budget and the building project, and you're right there by my side with most of that work, so I think you know how that's playing out. The building project is going smoothly. It's less time-consuming than last year in some ways, but it's still, we're in a spike.
Don't trick yourself.
I know, because we just hit one of those spike periods where we're going to have seven meetings in two days. So, I think our project team is doing a fantastic job of keeping it on schedule, on budget, and letting us know when we need to intervene. But we still do hit these pockets of time where we're called upon to, you know, sit in and help them make some final decisions. So, we'll see. I think it's gonna be a little bit of a rollercoaster ride, but I, I think, I think we're in a good place with it. You know, big shout-out to John. He's, he's kind of the quiet partner in this, but he deals with the day-to-day, and there's a lot of little day-to-day things, everything, rerouting traffic and moving the kids to, oh, National Grid's gonna show up tomorrow, last minute, get ready. So, you know, he's really been a great sport, enrolled at the punches, and logistics is his, one of his strong suits, so it's been a real big help, obviously, he's been watching them. So, I think, if you have questions about the budget, things that you may not be aware of, I'm happy to answer them, but I don't want to take up more time. That's kind of where I am with goals. I think we have a couple of questions on the goals.
Yep.
So, yeah, Pam, under student learning.
Yep.
I know you've had explore opportunities to expand cultural proficiency in students and staff.
Yep.
Been on your goal sheet for a couple of years. Did you roll that into something else, or did it drop off?
I have rolled that into, and hoping that the collaborator's gonna be able to help us with that.
Okay.
We've been doing and attending as many workshops and informational sessions as we can to try to find an inroad there, and we are ahead of many schools. And the work we're doing around SEL is typically the conversation that's being had, so looking at the root causes, developing a long-term concept of understanding yourself and others seems to be the way people are recommending going at it. So, I'm hoping this conversation around equity gives us broader insight into other things that we may be doing.
Great. And then, just looking back at goals from last year, I know cleargov.gov was stalled during the, kind of the building project, et cetera. Is that, where do we stand with that? And are we paying, is it, I know we talked about it being live, there was some data that needed to be reviewed, like where are we with ClearGov? And I'm just wondering if we're?
Yep, we launched it in November.
Right.
End of October. It's up, it's on the budget website, and we've been including it in all our budget documents as a point of reference.
But it's not, it's not completely?
No, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
It's up, it's running, it's active.
Okay, great. And then the budget, the annual budget document, I know that's getting deferred to 2020 physically or 2022?
Oh, yep. Unless we can pull it to get something together in the next month, but I'm not optimistic.
Okay.
And that's more of a, basically, we don't have anyone who's helping us with any of our marketing tools, and it's going to be an exercise in just reformatting and looking at a new way of designing, in a graphic way. So that's, that's gonna be me, and it's gonna be Abi having to redo all of these graphs and charts. So, kind of hard to do right now. And I just don't want, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, so if we can underpromise, if we can work it in, we'd have to have it ready by 3/17. I'm not optimistic.
That's a little boy's guess.
All right.
3/17-ish.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I wonder if we can, in a quiet night, if you could do a little bit more in-depth
on this Essex County Learning Collaborative. I'm interested in kind of goals and deadlines and kind of what, what the outcomes will be. Do you know what I mean? I've just, this is really interesting, and I, especially the idea of new models for learning. What does that look like? So, well, it's?
Yes, we can do more.
Yeah.
If the answer is, we don't know.
Yeah, but you can tell us kind of like what the framework is.
And Julie really has taken lead on this.
Yeah.
So we will bring her in and have a discussion with her.
Perfect.
And she can do the literacy update and the ruler grant update.
Yeah.
Which I mentioned a long way, I didn't even mention it as part of this tonight. That seems to be recognized as well.
So we can?
I'd like her to come in and just, she's been really active in helping us apply our grants.
Yeah.
So it might be a good opportunity to talk about them.
One other thing that I don't see here?
Yep.
Is that, you know, this is work that you're doing in our district, so it's kind of like there's, there's outreach and collaboration with other districts, but I think there's also a lot more work that you guys are doing with two towns in terms of shared services that I don't think is reflected here, and I think probably should find a way to put that in there, because it comes up almost every finance meeting, finance committee subgroup that we have, we talk about that. And I think that the school district takes, we should take a little credit for the fact that we initiated the idea of this kind of, you know, for the crowd. I initiated it.
We've talked about it on the HR side, sharing HR services for the town. And I think with, you know, being mired in the budget as of late, we're still having those discussions.
Yeah.
I don't think we are as far as we want to be on that, but I think it's definitely a doable.
But I think it's something we are actively participating in, and I think that, you know, you guys, you and Abi have actually been leaders in that, so I think it should be reflected here.
Take the credit for that.
I just have one comment and one question. I like what Annie was just saying about that Essex County Learning Collaborative, and I'd love to hear updates kind of as we go along.
It's funny, if I'm looking at John, we're going in, we didn't, we were, I think I had talked about this at one of the meetings, we have control issues sometimes, and we didn't really know what to expect, and it wasn't, we are meeting the ASC. Like, we like to know what we're getting into, some of us more than others, but it wasn't defined enough for us, so we really went skeptically, not knowing what was going to come out of it. And the whole first session was brainstorming and getting to know what our, the whole point was to identify what collectively our common issues are on the North Shore. So these are all things that everyone had on their individual list as areas of concern, investigation, or development. So it was really about creating a set of goals with other people, and not going in and saying, we want to work on this, can you fund it for us? So that's why I said it's a little bit, it's a little bit squishy in terms of what exactly it's going to look like, but to the best of our understanding is, once we identify and solidify the goals, because we'll go back on the third, we were hopeful that we could not sway, but inform? Inform the group of the importance of some of the things we were working on, like the new models of learning that align with the vision of the graduate, so that we could tap into some of those resources to support. So that's what we're looking about for, for us, how, how that PD works for us. Is it going to all be group PD? Do we get some localized money? We're getting in $10,000 installments over the next few years.
Wow.
To support.
So we'd love to hear about it as it goes on.
Yep, and I'd like Julie to come in and do that.
And then my other question, but I'd, I'd love to hear about it in your updates.
Yep.
You know, just kind of like anecdotally. And then my other question is, the Wellness Committee. That's awesome. I'm happy to hear that. Will they work closely with ME Hub?
That is our hope.
Excellent. Okay.
We were talking about maybe having somebody from ME Hub.
Yeah, they're listed as a committee.
Great.
And Sarah's gonna participate and organize.
Yay.
I'm the first one, but I'm sure she'll listen.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Okay. Terrific. Thank you very much. Anything else? Anyone else have any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Memorial School.
How are ya?
Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for having us.
I just want to say a special thank you to all of you for this crazy year and how flexible you guys have all been, because we haven't heard boo on anything. So, thank you. I know it hasn't been easy, and thank the kids for us too, because I know it's a different thing.
Yeah, we definitely will. And actually, when we were planning the presentation, that was another thing that Joy and I thought that we'll talk a little bit about, because there has been a lot of moving parts and such daily protocols.
I'm gonna.
No, just your chair.
Yeah, take your, take your chair.
Wait, I have two.
You guys got them all?
No.
Do you guys have them all here?
Oh, they're, that weird staple thing. I know, I don't like the new staple.
I like this.
You would?
It's easy to resign.
How many?
I've seen it, we've got a lot.
It kind of dies after a week.
Really?
For the little thing.
That's tested.
Thank you.
Everybody else? We need more?
Teresa, did you get them?
Eric calls the test, was trying to do something quickly and run it off, thinking it would work, and then it didn't, and then you just had a bunch of those.
It's great, it'd be great if you have not.
Because that computer is from probably 2007.
Yes.
Yes, you can.
This is good.
This is good.
You, over there.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so we appreciate you taking the time out to hear a little bit about what's been going on at Memorial School. The way Pam phrased it to us was, talk, you know, if we could talk about the changes and the evolution of the Memorial School experience since roughly 2012 until, until today, so that'll be the basis of our presentation. And so just to introduce the team that we have here, so we have Joy and Seaman, so she is our nurse, kind of local, local hero. I think her name's been mentioned about four times already tonight. She's also the meet of co-president. And we have Laura Carlson, who is our adjustment counselor. We have Maggie Tomiolo, who is a grade five teacher, and she's also on the School Building Committee from, as a resident of Essex. And Colleen Kellinger, who's a special ed teacher in our Earl Program, and she's also on our English Language Arts Leadership Team. And when I was thinking, kind of preparing for the presentation, I was thinking about all the changes that have happened in this time period, and I looked over as we were sitting there, and Laura, Maggie, and Colleen are three staff members that I hired, and Joanne hired me. She was here when I was hired. So, we have a little bit of the history and then a little bit of kind of where we're going. All right, so if we take the 30,000-foot view, and the funny thing was, I was Googling, because I hear that phrase all the time, and I wasn't sure exactly how many feet it was, so I Googled it, and it said it's the most annoying phrase in business presentations, but it is 30,000, is what you're supposed to use. So, the first thing that came to mind is just all the changes that have happened. So we've had a lot of changes in Memorial School's population, the size of Memorial School. So if you think eight years ago, we were probably around 450 students. We had to convert locker rooms that were antiquated, you know, we've never used locker rooms for our kids to change for PE in 2012 or, or now. So we had to convert those to teaching spaces, workspaces for teachers. The teachers always joke about when we used to have the photocopies in the old showers. So, but we, we were really bursting at the seams during that time, had to make the most of the space that we have. We also, at that same time, started to see a decline in birth rates. So, post-recession, there were just, you know, when we, when we look at our projections every year from the census, there were just less babies, not only in town, but, you know, at least in Massachusetts, I hear from a lot of the principals and other schools. So enrollment started to go down, but the diversity of student needs seemed to go up. So that's something we'll talk about a little bit. Also during that time, the state changed its expectations for teaching, learning, and also accountability. So, the state adopted the Common Core, which there was a lot of, kind of, there was a lot of hoopla in the, in the national press about that, because in some states, that was a major, major shift. But in Massachusetts, it was, it was not as drastic of a shift, but it was still change. And then also, they implemented a new accountability system, I believe, two years ago.
Post-Call.
Post-Call, we got it. So they implemented a new accountability system, which has kind of changed the playing field for, for all of us, and we've had to adapt to that. And then also, kind of a, kind of a big thing was, MCAS used to be paper and pencil, and, you know, at the time, the state decided that they thought it would be more efficient and a quicker turnaround for scores if, if the kids took MCAS on computers. So that has had its pros and cons. It definitely came with a lot of anxiety before the first time the kids took it on, on computers, and then, you know, we've adapted, so we're in a good place there now. Lot of staffing reconfigurations in that time period. I mean, I would say 75% of our staff has been new. So, retirements, you know, people choosing to stay home and raise families, new programs, reconfigurations of programs, so there's been quite a bit in that area, some staffing efficiencies, when we've had some budget situations where we need to be a little more efficient, so there's been some staffing changes. And then the physical plant, obviously, that was one thing, that was, that was the first thing that I noticed when I first walked into the building, was just the state of the physical plant. And so, you know, we did some things to, to get by with the support of not only the district, but also the PTO, to kind of bring it up to at least an aesthetically pleasing So as I mentioned, we, the state adopted the Common Core, so it wasn't a drastic change, but we did, for example, with our math program, we needed to update to the new, newest version of Everyday Math. So, you know, it's changed, it, it takes, it takes time and effort and professional development. We're fortunate, at Memorial School, we have a staff member, Lori Colepoise, who is a, she's an Everyday Math trainer. So she goes all over the country training school districts when they implement Everyday Math, or if they're, if they need to kind of get more out of the program or take it to the next level. So, we have her in-house, and she was able to do a really great job of seamlessly transitioning us to that new Common Core version.[1661.83] to the new, newest version of Everyday Math. So, you know, it's changed. It takes time and effort and professional development. We're fortunate, at Memorial School, we have a staff member, Lori Colepoise, who is a, she's an Everyday Math trainer. So, she goes all over the country training school districts when they implement Everyday Math or if they're, if they need to kind of get more out of the program or take it to the next level. So, we have her in-house, and she was able to do a really great job of seamlessly transitioning us to that new Common Core version. I think if you ask the teachers, they probably would say that although it was change and different, it did relieve a little bit of pressure because the new program was written more for 180-day school day. It's just a little more realistic instead of the old program where you're really kind of trying to cram things into a shorter time period. So, the new accountability system, as I mentioned, from the Department of Education. There were two kind of big changes that we saw. One was the sort of increased value that they are placing on attendance of students and specifically chronically absent students. So, that is just a larger piece of the formula now. So, we've implemented district-wide a communication system for parents so that they know when they're hitting certain thresholds of unexcused absences. And the state, when they look at absences as far as this goes, they're really just looking at any time a student's out. They basically say if a student's out, and it's because they have the flu, they're not learning because they're not in school, so it counts as a day. So, that's been a change. You know, people at first weren't used to it. Why are these letters coming home? I think we did a good job of communicating with folks so they understand why those letters are coming home. And then also, there's a focus on the lowest-performing subgroup. So, the subgroup of students that are performing at the lowest level, kind of identifying them and trying to bring them up to a higher-performing level. So, that's something that's highlighted in the accountability system. So, with all of that change with the Common Core, you know, there was quite a big change in math. It was a bit of a change in ELA as well. And what we started to notice the more we were looking at our curriculum was that we have a lot of great things happening from classroom to classroom. And a lot of those things are consistent across, let's say, like the fifth grade at Memorial School. But we have another school in Essex where there are great things happening there, maybe consistently at their fifth-grade level. But, you know, the fifth grade at Manchester Memorial and the fifth grade at Essex might be doing some different things. And so, there could be things that they're doing that would benefit us and some things that we're doing that could benefit them. I always tell the story, when I taught, I actually taught fifth grade. And it was a large building, so it was two schools in one building. We shared a core cafeteria, gym, that sort of thing. But two separate principals, two separate offices, two separate nurses. So, there were seven fifth grades on my side, and there were five fifth grades on the other side. So, if you picture, like, you know, Manchester, Essex, right, but all in one building, and I couldn't tell you what the people on the other side were doing, even though they taught the same grade in the same physical building. But because it was under two different, you know, two different principals and staff meetings were done separately and that sort of thing, you know, people just kind of end up going in a different direction. So, Julie Riley and Pam kind of organized an ELA leadership team to take a look at our ELA curriculum at both schools. Colleen Keller serves on that committee with myself and about, probably about seven other Memorial School teachers. So, she'll kind of just describe that process that we've gone through over the past couple of years.
So, as John mentioned, the Hill for Literacy has really been the group that we're working with that's overseeing the process. So, we are engaged as teachers, but also the administration is engaged, trying to figure out really the answer to three questions. So, the first question is, what are we using as a district and as a school? Because as John mentioned, we really need to figure out, are we using different, you know, materials in Manchester versus what's being used in Essex? So, that was really the first question. What are we all using for programs and assessments and resources? The second question is, what's out there? What kind of programs are available? Do those programs provide literacy? And we're talking at ELA, there was a lot of discussion about too much reading and not enough writing. So, ELA, we're focused on, you know, the five kind of pillars of reading, but also written language. And I think that's actually taken a little bit more focus of, you know, the people, because we have a lot of reading specialists. We have a lot of people who are OG certified in all kinds of different trainings. But the written language, we identified as a particular area of need. So, what are we doing? What's out there? And then the third question is, what do we need and what best meets our needs and provides access to the curriculum for the range of students that we have? So, that's really what the team's looking at. The ELA literacy team is teachers from Manchester, Essex administrators. And currently, what we're working on is looking at all the different programs. But the teachers also have a really important role because they first went through and listed everything. They went to the shelves, and they said, these are all of the things that we have. I don't think all the things are really being used, but it's quite a list. And so, everybody's involved, and I think that's an important part of the process because what we want to do is provide something that is going to meet the needs of all the students, something that the teachers are going to be able to use across grade levels and also provide that vertical alignment. Because we want kids to arrive at Manchester Middle School having a shared experience and coming with similar experiences so that the sixth-grade teachers are kind of set up. I didn't mention that there are middle school representatives on the literacy team because that will probably be a next step where this will kind of go through. So, right now, we're focused on K through five with literacy. And again, partnership with the Hill for Literacy. And the programs that we're currently reviewing, Essex, I think, has MyView, and they have, you know, some different review questions that they're going through and looking at all of the components of the ELA curriculum. Manchester has Wonders, and then we'll switch. So, we're doing a program review rather than a pilot, as recommended by the Hill. And so, that's where everybody is right now in terms of looking at what's out there. So, Hill, I mean, the literacy team is looking at what we currently have, and the teachers are looking at what's out there to answer that third question. Okay, good. What's going to best meet all of our needs? So, that's kind of where we are with the curriculum review.
So, I think the question is with, you know, the two commercially-produced programs, will they help us achieve a high-quality, high-level, consistent experience between both schools, K to five? So, when they get to grade six, they're going to have that shared experience. Or would we be better off using the materials that we currently are using and mapping, creating a curriculum map that both schools follow so that they're able to have a shared experience? So, we're kind of at that crossroads of which way we go, and we should know, you know, close to it. So, I mentioned earlier, as our population was changing in numbers, it was also changing in student needs, profiles. That has kind of led us to some program development and some staffing reorganization that has helped us meet the needs of diverse learners at a higher level.
So, in addition to meeting the needs of the students in the general education classroom, kids who have special needs in a co-teaching model or in a supported classroom model, at Manchester, at Memorial, we also have two sub-separate programs that provide services to students across the district. So, if there are students in Essex, they would come over to Memorial for the program. So, one program is the SAIL program, which is Students with Academic and Integrated Learning Needs. And the program was in existence prior to my arrival, so 2012. But it has changed quite a bit. So, I just wanted to highlight a few of the differences and a few things that have changed over the years. So, currently, there are two full-time special ed teachers that are running the program. The teaching assistants are now required to complete the, it's called RBT, so it's the Registered Behavior Technician Training Program, and complete it within the first year of being hired. So, that's something that's been different. The teaching assistants are also all observed by in-house VCPA, so sort of by behavior analysts. And the program also does work with fellows from Anticot. And so, that's been another nice addition to just have that community connection. So, that's been over the past couple of years. And they're also training all of the SAIL staff in CPI, so the Crisis Prevention Institute de-escalation techniques. So, just a few of the changes. And I know these are changes from prior to my arrival, so 2012 and kind of beyond. The other sub-separate program is the Earl program. So, it's the intensive reading and written language program. And again, in 2012, the program started just working with students in fifth grade. And since then, we've expanded. So, now we have two classrooms. So, we have a second and third-grade classroom, and we have a fourth and fifth-grade classroom. And again, it's for students across the district. Staffing has obviously changed a little bit. So, there's a special ed teacher in each program, a reading specialist in each program, and then one reading specialist that floats between the programs so that we can provide one-on-one reading tutorials for the students and meet their needs just across our curriculum. So, just, those are just a couple of little changes with the Earl and SAIL programs.
All right. So, the diverse medical needs. As the academics have become more diverse, so have our medical needs. We have more and more students who now require skilled nursing care during a school day to have certain procedures done. The healthcare plans are now part of the student records. And I just think that along with teaching our children what they learn each day in school, we're also teaching them how to handle their conditions and how to live with it. So, it really has changed through the years.
So, the needs of our student population in terms of looking at social-emotional needs has really changed over the past five years. We're seeing a lot of students with higher-level stressors that are going on either in school or outside of school, such as anxiety. And while meeting the students' academic needs is our utmost priority, our staff really has done a wonderful job in kind of shifting the mindset and looking at the whole student and realizing that social-emotional needs and academics really need to kind of be looked at equally. So, in doing that shift at Memorial, we've been trying to incorporate different things. We have the role of curriculum, reviewing our core values during monthly school-wide meetings, running community service projects, and incorporating student leadership by having student ambassadors take the lead in organizing many school-wide initiatives. We've also added the second step, anti-bullying curriculum across grade levels, which has been well-received by both staff and students alike. And then additionally, we've also, we're also able to provide in-school counseling by both myself and Dr. Kathy Penoyer. And these services are really made available to any child whose academic, I'm sorry, social-emotional needs are impacting their academics.
So, a few years ago, there was kind of a phrase that you've heard a lot in schools, and it was accepting differences. At our leadership team at Memorial School, we've had a lot of conversations about accepting differences and diversity is really not enough. And I think you all have heard me talk about this at school-appropriate plan presentations. But we feel like it's more important or more appropriate to teach children to appreciate diversity and appreciate differences. I shouldn't have taken a picture for the presentation, but the kindergarten kids recently read a book about, it was called, Like, It's Okay to Be Different. And they made these drawings of just, you know, different things, like it's okay to have big feet, it's okay to have big ears, and these types of things. But it really goes a lot deeper for us with a lot of the things that we do at our school-wide meetings and then our district-led Understanding Our Differences program. So, Laura's going to talk about our school-wide meetings, and then Julie's going to talk about the Understanding Our Differences.
Yeah, just in terms of looking at, you know, differences and diversity, I think that we've done a good job of trying to include that in our monthly school-wide meetings. We've asked local community members to come in, share their personal stories that reflect our core values. For example, we had a community member share her personal story of living with MS while focusing on the effort it took her to accomplish her dreams of climbing Mount Everest despite the odds. And then thanks to the help of Manchester or Memorial's PTO enrichment committee, for the past several years, we've had the pleasure of inviting the Berkshire Hills Music Academy perform what I'll call a rock concert. And the Music Academy is a transitional program for young adults with intellectual disabilities. And the concert that they put on is really, it's really amazing, and it's a wonderful representation of how we all can look beyond differences and recognize individual strengths. And then for the past several years, and we kind of roll it out during our school-wide meetings, Memorial has been participating in the Penance for Patients program, which all the proceeds benefit the leukemia and lymphoma society. And our students have really enjoyed the science-based service learning program, and Memorial has raised nearly $4,000 each year for this charity.
The Understanding Our Differences program is a program that we run that helps the students understand that people are different in the classroom and in our community. So, it's done in third, fourth, fifth grade. Third grade mostly deals with physical disabilities. And we've been lucky enough to have a member of the community who was paralyzed after an accident, who comes in and speaks to the children what that's like to navigate and how he's learned to do everything that everybody else can, even though he's paralyzed. In fourth grade, they do learning disabilities. And actually, we have people from the high school, the students, come over, and they speak to the children about what that's like and how they've gotten to where they are. And then in the fifth grade, we actually do autism spectrum disorder. And this year, we'll actually have a community member come and speak to the children about what it's like to be an adult with autism and go to work every day. So, that's a great program.
So, when you think of these things, these really are things that are special. You know, all of these things that we're describing are important to all of us as the staff at Memorial. But if you think of each one of these pieces here, this is, these are all community connections. So, the gentleman that Joanne was referencing, who's paralyzed, is a former Memorial School student. So, he's able to say to the kids, like, hey, I was just like you. You know, I played lacrosse. I used to swim. I used to surf. I had a ski accident. You know, it was unfortunate, and I had to change the way I did things. But it's really cool. He's actually still surfs. Friends have taken him out, and he's got a modified board and that sort of thing. But, you know, and then our former students that are at the high school coming back and talking about, like, hey, when I was in your desk, and I, you know, I have a learning disability, this is what it was like for me. And don't worry, it's going to be okay. You know, you'll get through it. And like, the number of kids that are like, oh, my God, I can relate to it. I can relate to you is pretty amazing. And so, something that I'm, you know, really proud of is the strong community partnerships that we have with individuals, but also with some of the organizations, you know, in Manchester and in the surrounding communities.
We're really lucky that we have such a great relationship with the fire department. So, every fall, they come and we do Fire Safety Week. They bring Sparky, the dog. And who could live without Sparky? They show a movie. They ask questions. And then the highlight of the week is you go out to the smokehouse. And the children actually learn how to get out of a smoky building. And the kids absolutely love it. The firemen absolutely love it, and Sparky goes crazy.
So, another community connection that we are fortunate to have this year is Manchester Police Department partnering with Manchester Essex Public Schools. And we've welcomed Officer Andrea Locke to our school community as our school resource officer this year. And she's quickly become a familiar and friendly face to both our staff and our students. Officer Locke has joined in many gym lessons and is forming really meaningful connections with our students. And whether she's eating lunch with them or giving them high fives in the hallway, I think she really has kind of seamlessly fit into our school. So, we also are able to form connections with our mobile crisis team. So, we've collaborated with local agencies in providing them, and they help give us help when we have questions about mental health needs. We've formed relationships with Lady Crisis Team for emergency services and interventions. We've made lots of connections with local area hospitals and lots of connections with individual outside counselors. And these services are really all utilized when we're in need of doing a risk assessment or trying to get families, family partnerships going, or if we're needing to provide a student with inpatient services.
Manchester Parks and Rec is the greatest program as far as I'm concerned. It provides so much to all our parents and families and the children. They offer us before school, after school, and they work with the members of the community that we have after-school enrichment programs. So, any given day in the afternoon, you can walk down a hall, and somebody's learning chess, somebody might be learning knitting, someone's taking a piano lesson. But all of that is happening at our school because of their relationship with us.
So, then there's kind of another partnership that's tied in there. So, our PTO does a lot of fundraisers throughout the year, and there's a scholarship fund where they donate a certain amount of money every year to the Memorial School Scholarship Fund. So, if we have a student who would benefit from before or after-school programs, but, you know, the finances aren't there for the family, it's a really nice thing for me to be able to say, you know what, you need the care before or after, or, you know, you want to get your child more involved in an activity, like, I can take care of that. So, that's kind of really nice, kind of partnership between the school, PTO, and Parks as well. All right. So, the physical plant. Physical plant, right now, is in a very interesting place. It's going to be in a very interesting place for a little while. But so, essentially, when I started the presentation, I was talking about, you know, the first time I walked into the building and just kind of took a look around and was like, oh, boy, there's just a lot going on here. And there were a number of challenges that became really insurmountable when I think back to the winter, where, of course, in the dead of winter, when it was, you know, ridiculously cold out, not like it is this winter right now. But of course, the boiler, you know, blows a hole in the side of it. And so, we kick on the other boiler, and then that one blows a hole in the side of it. And so, we had to rent a boiler on, that was actually a trailer that pulled up to the side of the building, had to be plumbed in to our heating system, just so that we were able to get through long enough to get a new boiler installed. So, that was obviously like an extreme situation. So that was obviously like an extreme situation, but just in general, the systems in the building have just, and you've all heard about this for years, but they just have been such a challenge. The electrical system, you know, you plug one thing in and you're okay, and then you plug one more thing in, you know, like your projector in your classroom, so you can teach a lesson, and then it blows a circuit, and the teachers have to go down the hall to, you know, to untrip the circuit. Number of plumbing situations where, you know, the plumbers will just come in and will just say, you know, these are, you know, pipes from 1950. These things happen, like they fail at some point. We actually had a middle school basketball game the other day, and they were playing my hometown of Georgetown. And one of the dads came and he was, oh, these backboards look like they're from 1950. I said, oh, they, they are, actually. So I said, don't worry, in a couple of years, you'll have, you know, become a really nice facility. So and then also, you know, the heat, you've heard the stories about the heat where it's either on full blast or off, and the teachers have to regulate that by putting a pair of scissors or something into the great inflicting the switch on and off. Obviously, you know, security, you know, post some of the events that have happened in our country, we were really fortunate to have the support of the school committee and the district finances to be able to retrofit the building with some security measures. But, you know, when you're trying to put, you know, 2020 technology into a building that was built in, you know, the 50s, it just, it just was not, it just hasn't been perfect. You know, the inefficiency of the windows, you know, the rate at which the windows are broken because they're so brittle. Maggie had one today that a stray football hit. You know, the parking and queuing, the lack of efficiency at drop-off and pickup, the safety issues in the roadway, where we have cars queued up, you know, to the middle school in the morning, usually more in the afternoon, but making back up in the morning too. But, you know, despite all of that, you know, one of our greatest strengths is our, is our staff, and, you know, how adaptable and flexible they are, how adaptable and flexible the students and the parents are, and how supportive the community is. So who is going to talk a little bit about that?
So this was the best part. When John asked me to look at this, I just think that we have the most adaptable staff, students, parents, community over at Memorial. And when you really think about some of the things, and I'll give you a few examples of what we've been through, it's amazing that we did it. Eight years ago, when John first came, we really needed a little polish and paint. So the PTO got a grant with Tina Lamont, and she painted beautiful murals all around the building, and little quotes everywhere to remind you why we're there, and that really spruced us up. And then we ended up getting a fish tank, which some are no longer with us, but there's some that are still there. We all learned a big lesson on how to feed them. But years ago, we needed room for a resource room, and out of nowhere, we tore down a locker and a shower, made that an OT room and a teacher's room, and there we had a classroom that we needed. When we tore down the wing and we said, where are we going to put everybody, all of a sudden, we had our class on wheels, we have traveling foreign language, and we removed a quarter of the seats out of the auditorium so that the music teacher could run a class. When PE loses outdoor space, it's amazing what Luke Boria can do in a tennis court. It's amazing. When you go from four recess areas to two in good weather, and when it's bad weather, you have one, it's amazing what you can come up with, with the help of the PTO, for the children to play and enjoy themselves. When your entire route to school, parking, arrival, dismissal, emergency procedures, all need to change like that, what you do is you get safeguards to school, you get the pedestrian committee, you get the school committee, the fire department, police department, parents, the building committee, and you all work together, and somehow, it all works. And when it needs to be tweaked, we tweak it because we're adaptable. And all of this happens each and every day without skipping a beat. And I can tell you that we adapted to our beloved old school. We have adapted to losing rooms and watching a new building, but I know that we're going to adapt to a new school, and it'll all be fine.
You know, and just, you know, very well put, and just to the community, the community side of things, you know, when we designed the new building and we learned about the different phases that would take place, and kind of what would be lost in that interim period, you know, one piece that was lost was the tennis courts out at Brook Street. We lost access to Brook Street as well. And so which, which really left the tennis courts on our, the front of our property to be the only tennis courts for the community. But then in the nice weather, phys ed class happens outside, we couldn't go to the turf, you know, because of, because of the construction. So Luke Boria asked if, you know, if he could use a tennis court, and I, you know, I said, sure. But then what was happening was, because that was the only tennis court left, Luke would be out teaching class, and there would be, you know, community members out there wanting to play tennis. And so, you know, we had to, we had to, we had to close it down during the school day because we don't know who the people are necessarily, and we have to have, you know, a certain level of security. So we would, you know, kind of lock it from, you know, eight until, until three, and we would take the classes out there. And I was ready for a lot of really upset tennis players. And I think we received maybe one or two calls, and they just said, hey, what's up with the tennis courts? How come there's a lock on it? And, you know, Cindy explained, they're like, oh, all right, no worries, no problem, you know, we get it. So, you know, thankfully, it's temporary, and pretty soon, all of that stuff will be, you know, opened back up. But, you know, the community support really kind of comes in all different forms. All right, so coming soon, we saved the best for last, met poor Maggie's over there driving the PowerPoint, we're almost to her part. We get, we give her the fun part. But I just want to talk a little bit about the new building, the design drivers for the new building. So the new building is designed around the way we currently teach in Manchester Essex and the way we, we're projecting education to be in Manchester Essex in the future. So they took the inventory from all of our staff, okay, so how do you teach ELA? How do you teach math? What does it look like? You know, a lot, a lot of, you know, school building, design companies design and build a lot of, you know, middle schools and high schools, which are very, you know, teaching is just different at a, at a high school compared to a kindergarten classroom. So they're very thoughtful about listening to how we teach and the different kind of spaces that we need. You know, we don't teach with desks in rows and that sort of thing. One of the, one of the phrases early on that we adopted was that we wanted to make sure we built a building that was timeless but not trendy. So a lot of times when you get with, you know, designers, they're, they're very excited about, like, you know, this new trend that is, you know, very interesting on paper. But we want to make sure that the building is highly functional as well. The school that I taught at in Easton was a beautiful school, it won all kinds of architectural awards, but it really wasn't functional, like my classroom space was very, it was, it was just, it was a funky shape, and things weren't really where they, where they needed to be and that sort of thing. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had a building that would, as MSBA requires, a building that will serve for at least the next 15 years. So one of the, one of the things we're most excited about is, you know, kind of the other side of our retrofitting for safety and security features. The new building will have modern safety and security features as a part of the design. So things like sightlines, a two-stage entrance, modern security devices, so modern cameras that can be called up, you know, in real time on a, on a mobile device, for example. You know, the vestibule design of that two-stage entry, you know, so it's been a lot of thought that's gone into safety and security without making that feel like, you know, like we're in some kind of a guarded situation. So then also, the teachers are really excited about modern functional teaching spaces. So we have had the opportunity the last two weeks to pop in and check out the progress, it's amazing. I don't want to steal Maggie's thunder, but when you go inside and see how far along the second floor is, it's starting to feel like a building already inside. But, you know, modern technology that works and is where it should be, you know, that's not tripping electrical outlets and that sort of thing. You know, when I first got to Memorial, every school had a projector, but you couldn't see what it was projecting because of the type of projector and the angle of the light coming into the rooms. You know, small things like that that will go a long way in the building. So obviously, the adequate electrical capacity, improved air quality, and it's a huge thing. That's going to be like night and day for people. The displacement system that brings in fresh dehumidified air into the classrooms. The learning spaces being temperature-controlled, I know that sounds silly, but it has been a luxury that we haven't had for a while. And then it's designed with a lot of adaptable teaching and learning spaces, so breakout spaces in the hallway, project rooms, common meeting areas, like the hub is designed to be a common meeting area where a grade or even the whole school could go for a presentation or a meeting, which is something that I really missed from my previous school. In this school, like a place to just bring the whole fifth grade together and have, you know, like a grade-level meeting, kind of like what we have at middle school here. And then the property itself is very thoughtfully organized, so there'll be modern play and learning spaces, and then improved, and much safer traffic flow. So we're really excited about that, and we have some pictures. Maggie will walk you through them.
Hey, I really did get to do the fun part. So this was us in the fall. This was the site work that was taking place where the former third-grade wing, C Wing was. And when we first started school, we had a lot of ground shaking and pencils shaking off the desks. But I have to be honest, it's amazing to me how resilient our kids are. It just became part of the normal thing, and the show just went on. So we watched them do the site work and then lay the foundation, you wouldn't believe actually how deep that foundation goes. So we got to watch it, literally build it from the bottom up. And the kids were really excited about it, and so I think then the steel beams arrived. The kids were very excited about that as well.
John, I know who checked that picture.
And
I was with you.
And I think not only were they excited, it was an easy, smooth delivery, but most of all, it was safe. So I think
All right, so just before you move from this picture, so that picture is my son playing soccer against Shannon's son. You can see Shannon and I were standing right there with her husband, and you can see in the background, they were actually putting three beams in place at one time. I was like, oh, that's really cool. So. George had a doc come out on the right hand.
So this area is an area that, if you're familiar with the building, it was where the old greenhouse was. We had some raised beds and a zen garden, along with some really beautiful old trees that, it was a nice area for kids to go out and have quiet or do small group projects or even bring your class out. But we, like was mentioned, we got rid of several playground areas, and so we had to make a new one. So all of that went away, and now it's all pavement.
An asphalt garden.
Yeah, asphalt garden, thank you, Manny. So what I think is really special is that our space has changed so much that we have this kind of makeshift staff room where people literally probably go get their mail and leave. But that doesn't change the dedication of our teachers. Just because we can't meet up in the staff room and have a meeting or have a common space to get together, we go find each other. And so this is just one example of many of us just being really flexible and, and working together. So this was really exciting. There's a lot of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics that are going into building, a new building. So while the kids are watching it being built, we're also trying to bring some of what's going on outside into the classroom. And so this is our architect, and she came in and did a presentation about what the building's going to look like. And the kids were completely enamored because they showed, I'm not sure if you've seen it or not, but the drone footage of kind of what it looks from an aerial view. They absolutely loved that. Another STEM project that one of our kindergarten teachers did was she brought, the PTO actually bought her, they're called Kiva planks. And they get to go out and look out the window in the glass hallway and bring these planks and blocks and make their own creation of a new building, and looking at what makes a foundation, what do you need for structural engineering kind of things. So I think, you know, not just living in construction, but kind of taking and finding teaching moments out of it is really important. This is a great picture, so I think it's important to notice that there's different age levels here. So fifth grade historically has had something called kindergarten buddies or first grade buddies, depending on the matchup. And this gives an opportunity for students in fifth grade to really show some leadership, to show that they're the big brothers and sisters of the school. And so this last holiday season, the fifth grade got together with their buddies and put up a little assembly line and made bubbles with hot chocolate and things like that, and then packaged them all up, and then gave them to the construction workers for a little holiday gift. So it was kind of nice to still keep that connection and keep it friendly and get some, you know, see a face from somebody that's working outside. And they loved it. It was a really nice project.
And that's just the three representatives that came in to give gifts, but the kids made, there were about 30 or 40 workers on site at that point, so they made 30 or 40 gifts. Steve Buckley is the gentleman on the right, he's kind of like my, my point of contact from a construction standpoint every day. They brought the gifts out to all the little workers. So nice way for the kids to give back.
Yeah. So it was mentioned that the music class has been moved to the auditorium. This has been really fun for the kids. They, that space is kind of, kind of lends itself to performances. So they love creating performances. I think this year, the holiday concert was one of our best ever. And Fiona did just such a great job adapting to that space. And not only does she have the space and the stage and so forth, but it's still as equipped as a regular classroom the way that she had it last year with the, an active board there. So again, changes, flexibility, but still trying to get the job done. And the kids, again, are super resilient and loving it. So this is one of my favorite slides. I know it doesn't look all that exciting. But last fall, you saw, you saw the foundation being built, we saw the walls go up, and then all of a sudden, it closed. And we saw absolutely nothing. But we could hear things going on, we knew things were going on in there, we just didn't know what. So just a couple, like, I don't know, maybe 10 days ago or so, when we came back from the holiday break, the outside kind of really started to take shape, the windows kind of opened up, and we saw a little peek of what might be going on in there. So this morning, I had the pleasure of getting my first glimpse of going into the building. And you can only go on the second floor right now, they're building it from the top down. And this is right at the beginning of the entrance of the second story. You can see on the left, I think that's a little resource room. And on the second story, it will house the third grade, fourth grade, one of the sale rooms, and a resource room. This is one of the resource rooms at the top, it's really starting to take shape, you can see the door frame. I'm going to talk a minute about the, those are actually windows on the right-hand side and clear story on the top. So it's great to let a lot of light in from the, from the hallway, you don't feel so closed off, and you really feel more together with, with the staff and students that are around you. Now it's starting to take shape even a little bit more by adding some drywall. And if you notice here, the hallway is very wide, which is really important to, to our teaching. We do a lot of breakout space. We have room in our classrooms with small tables and so forth, but sometimes it's nice for kids to really break out. In this case, there is a really wide area where there's going to be some stadium seating, so kids can go out and work there. There's also, I took a picture of it, I couldn't remember whether it was in here or not, but there's some wall space that kind of comes out, so not far, you know, maybe to here or so, where kids can kind of feel like they're in an alcove and really kind of get some work done. What I really like too What I really like too, here's the classroom. So again, there's the doorway with the clear story. What's important for me as a teacher, that I think that the architects really listen to, is that yes, I do take advantage of that breakout space, but I still need to keep an eye on it. I still need to know what's going on in the hall. So having that, those windows into the hallway, not are just aesthetically great, but they actually serve a purpose. So I'm really excited about that. Oops. The restrooms that you can see here, there's two staff bathrooms on the right and the left, and then it's just like when you go into an airport, you would go right to the girls, left to the boys, there's no doors to it. On their way out are a wall of sinks, so the sinks aren't in with the restrooms, which is really nice, and I think we'll be able to kind of monitor what's going on in there a little bit better. Again, there's the classroom, and here's, you know, I know that everybody's seen a picture of it, but the staff and students are all very excited about the move, a little intimidated about the move, but change is good, and we're really looking forward to it. So thank you.
There's one more slide there. And so it really does take a village. I mean, it starts here at this table, goes to, you know, the add council, the leadership team, the teachers, the parents, and then the community, you know, kind of beyond the floor balls at the school. And we're really fortunate that our village is very strong and very supportive, and you all allow us to do all these awesome things for the kids. You know, my own children often ask me, how come we don't get to go to your school? And, you know, obviously there's a geographic issue there. In any event, you know, we're really lucky to be able to do what we do for the kids. So anyone have any questions? We'd be happy to...
First off, thank you guys very much. That's great. And as an aside, I have a third grader who told me during the foundation construction, a teacher told the class that every once in a while, they would get a surprise chair One thing we've talked a lot about here is the school resource office, right?
Yeah.
So I'm sure that between elementary school kids and middle high school, the differences are going to vary quite a bit. But I'm just curious if you have any, either current examples or maybe future considerations on how to best leverage that resource for the kids?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you asked that. So it was interesting when we kind of learned about what the schedule would be, because the schedule is, you know, a high percentage of her time is at the middle high school and a much smaller percentage at the elementary schools. At first, I kind of was like, all right, so, you know, are we going to kind of get anything, you know, out of this? And I think it was, is it her, like, first week maybe? Situation that happened, obviously I won't go into the details, but it was one that we were managing at a school level. Laura came into my office and kind of gave me an update. It was right at dismissal time, and it was a situation where I knew right away that it was a little bit beyond what we could handle. So I was able to call Andrea on her cellphone. She was actually home already and had already kind of changed out of her work clothes, but she said, I'm going to make a couple of calls, I'm going to hop in my car, and I'll be right there. And in, you know, two minutes, we had, you know, a couple of people from the police department there, and then Andrea arrived as well. And having her, so she's always in, you know, plain clothes, so to speak, so having her in plain clothes made the situation go a lot more smoothly, and she was able to kind of network within her department, but also beyond, to make sure that we were able to handle the situation in a, I would say, a highly effective manner. And so we were kind of joking at the end, we're like, oh, you know, where were you? You know, and then all of a sudden, you know, you're here, and the first week, we have a need for you. So it was, you know, it was, I would say, it paid for itself, you know, that one that is a pretty involved situation.
I guess my other question would be, I think this was a little bit, the social emotional help is, as a third grade parent, my daughter will be doing MCAS for the first. So I'm just a little curious about how you kind of prepare the kids for their first time around with that?
Yeah.
And also maybe address some of the stress that comes along with that? Or is the stress more the second and third year kids who are already familiar with it, and the third graders just kind of go in?
Yeah, that's a good question. So third graders have a lot of misconceptions about MCAS, and there have been years when I've gone into third grade and talked to the kids about their worries about MCAS. And it's always interesting what they're worried about. You know, they're worried that if they don't do well, they'll get a bad grade on the report card. If they do well, they won't go on to fourth grade. And so I, you know, in the past, when I've done that, you know, I've told them, like, we don't even get your scores until you're already in fourth grade, we're not going to come and bring you back, you know? It doesn't work that way. It's one test on one day. You know, we on the back end, you know, do our due diligence to analyze the results and see how we can adjust our practice to try to get kids performing at a higher level. But I mean, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we don't, we don't look at it as the end all be all. You know, when I talk to people about what we do at our school, they're always like, wow, you're able to do a lot of really amazing things. And what I say is, well, you know, our kids do well, so we're able to do a lot of those things, we're able to do a lot of the whole child stuff. And we really don't, you know, don't feel like it's a pressure cooker situation for the teachers or for the kids. You know, I always just tell the teachers, like, they're going to do well, right? They're going to do well, they always do well, you know, we're not going to sweat it. But yeah, it is tough when it's their, when it's their first go around, and they've heard about it, it gets on the news, and, you know. But it's just one test, it's just one measure. I mean, I don't even, I don't even show my own children their scores, they've never seen them. I just, I look at it in a loving cabinet, and, you know, we'll be fine with the kinds of stuff, you know?
Same with you, please. All right. I don't have any questions. That was amazing, thank you.
I just have to touch on one thing, and I'm glad that there's a video recording. That was a really good presentation on kind of hopefully five-ten. You know, when the next generation goes to go to next school, what went on and, you know, the themes of, there's a lot of adversity and overcoming that adaptability. And I don't mean to be facetious when I say, geez, I think it brought out the best in a lot of kind of the school, the community, the kids, the teachers, the staff. So I almost wonder, okay, five years from now, we're all settled in, everything's perfect. What's the adapted all the challenge? Yeah. So thank you very much. It's really, I was going to say, hopefully it's a good lesson to keep in mind.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Any questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
I have a couple. I'm really glad to hear that you're on the ELA team. I wanted to speak a little bit about, how do you choose a program that addresses the needs of children with challenges? So I don't think traditionally those peers living in McGrath Hill have actually accounted for students with early needs. So I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit about what you're seeing in terms of how they address that?
Sure. And that really is one of the challenges that we are looking at, and if you talk to any of the teachers, that's something that people are focusing on. Is this one program going to meet the needs of quite a range of students? And that's something that we are kind of trying to figure out right now. So we've taken the two recommendations, and we are doing a, you know, a really thorough look at the program K through five. There are groups of teachers who are going to look, and I think that's the question that we need to figure out the answer to. Will a program meet the needs at a level that we feel is appropriate and will, you know, allow these kids to really show us what they know? Now, within some of the programs, and I want to speak for all of them, there are intervention aspects to programs, there are RTI, you know, response to intervention, parts or supplemental resources. So the programs that are available now in 2020 are very different from some of the OX programs, you know, that maybe we all remember back in the day. So they're different, so we really are going into this with, you know, eyes wide open, looking and seeing, are there interventions built into these programs that are going to meet more needs than some of the things that we're doing right now? Are they going to meet everything? That's what we have to figure out. And that's not to say that we aren't going to use supplemental resources, especially in the specialized programs and for kids that we have identified that they need a particular kind of multimodal, you know, hands-on learning. So if there is a decision to go to one of these programs, it doesn't mean everything else is off the table, and I envision there will be some supplementing. But everything at this point, we want it to just be very purposeful. We want to be really clear that we're looking at everything, looking at what we have, looking at what's out there, and then making the best decision that we can, and then figuring out if we're missing something and what that is. So it's not just going to be...
Is that the issue that it's narrowed down to?
So MyView, I don't remember the publisher, and the other one is Wonders.
Pearson and McGrath Hill.
Pearson and McGrath Hill.
And then the third one that's still on the table is our own, Balanceless.
Right.
So it hasn't been decided that we're moving away from current practices.
Right. Current practices, but what we really are focused on is meeting the needs of students and providing consistency, grade level consistency, and then that vertical alignment, because we don't want kids to go from one, you know, second grade teacher to a third grade teacher, and then they haven't had the same experience, and then it makes it difficult to really build. So we want to set the kids up to build on a solid foundation, so.
Now, this is what I, I mean, it's great you're doing this, because I think you can do the same process in other disciplines, so that's, you know. And then my second question is that, you know, technology, this has been in the classroom since 2012, and I wondered if you could speak a little bit about how technology, I think we, over the years, have thought technology is going to solve a lot of bills and saw a lot of like exciting, wow, sexy stuff, and actually didn't necessarily play in the classroom as well? And I'm not talking about, I'm just saying in general, but I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about technology in the classroom?
Yeah, so if you think 12 years ago, that's when, you know, we put active boards in the classrooms and the sound field systems, you know, iPads, Chromebooks, those sorts of things. So I think some have, some are a slam dunk, right? The active boards, the sound field systems, those are slam dunk, they've improved instruction immensely. I think where it gets a little tricky is some of the applications of an iPad, for example. So I had a, I'm a principal's advisory cabinet for DSC, we meet every other month, and there were articles that we needed to read, and so I'm reading articles on my iPad, and I'm copying and pasting parts that I wanted to remember into a notepad, where all of a sudden I stopped and I thought to myself, well, when I was younger, I would have been reading and physically highlighting and then physically writing down. So when you transfer from the text to the writing, you're saying it over and over in your head five or six times, and so it's helping you to remember it. And as I'm copying and pasting, I'm like, this isn't doing anything for me to remember it, it's there, so I can review it, I can go later and read it four, five or six times. And just coincidentally, that night, my son was studying for a test and he was doing the same thing. And I'm like, buddy, that's, you have to write it out, you know, you have to physically highlight it.
So this came up the other day at work, is that true?
Yeah, true story.
So the writing of it is...
It imprints it on your brain.
Yeah, yeah. So I think 12 years ago, a lot of people felt like, okay, let's get rid of the books, you know, we're just going to have one tablet with all of your books. And actually, at his school, they all have to have iPads, and their textbooks are on their iPads. But I just feel like that application of especially reading or writing, you know, studying information to retain the information, I don't think it works quite as well. There's something about, you know, holding the tactile connection with your brain, and you're actually holding something and reading it or actually highlighting it, that helps you to remember it long-term. So I think, you know, there we say the pendulum swings every 10 years in education, and I think it's kind of coming back more to balance, where there are applications of technology that, I mean, I was actually joking the other day with Joanne, and I said, you know, in our school, if tonight I go and I take all the power cords to the active boards, the school will shut down. You know, because that's how they, that's like how they breathe, you know? But being thoughtful and careful about, you know, when to use some of the other pieces of technology. Now, the iPad itself, there's a lot of awesome things that you can do on it, you know, a lot of great things that you can access, but the, you know, there's still a, there's still a need for paper, I guess.
Sure. I have one question. I might have just been hearing it the right way. So I just wanted to just touch back on, you were talking about social emotional and kids with anxiety and helping them get services if it's, how I've heard in my brain, which is probably not the right way. If they're academically not performing, that's when they will get some services. So, but if kids are doing fine in school, I'm assuming that you still, but that's not the only...
So every kid has access, you know, to either myself for individual counseling or for group counseling, or to Dr. Memorial for the same. So it doesn't have to mean, it might just be a flag or an indication if the child is struggling academically, you know, for us to take a look at it, but certainly they don't need to be struggling academically.
But we have systems in place for, that you identify kids who might be on paper with the fabulous, but they're always in the same office or...
We do.
It's a system, actually.
That's why we're best friends. But yes, we do, we have some.
Yes, great. I have a couple of comments and a question, so fabulous, thank you. And I feel like all the stuff you're mentioning, I think, oh my God, it's so long ago. 2012, was that when you arrived?
I might have been, this is my...
Oh my goodness, because I'm thinking about all these things, thinking, gosh, my kids were so little when all that stuff arrived.
Yeah.
Anyway, I really like what you're doing on the diversity side. Again, that wasn't there when my kids were there, and I think the comment about appreciate versus accept, I really like that. I think that's a great approach and really age-appropriate. I think it will resonate more, and it does resonate more. And I love what you're doing with the building project and, you know, making the kids part of that, because it is their building.
Yeah.
And then I'm really happy to hear you say what you just said about paper and pen and kind of old school, and there's something about writing now, you know, it's just, there's no other way to get it in there sometimes. And then just a quick comment on the adaptability. So scary enough, my older son is doing a pickup a couple of times for some neighbors he's babysitting for, and I asked him how it went. I said, so how's the story over at Memorial? How's the whole pickup? He said, it's great, no problems. So from a teenager who used to be there, but it wasn't so great. Great job. And then last comment, actually a question I have. Colleen, about the ELA task force, how are you guys feeling about where you are in the whole process? And then have you learned anything surprising that you weren't expecting to learn, either about what you guys are doing or about the kids? I mean, have there been any like earth-shattering things that you guys have...
Well, I think that, how is everybody feeling? I'll do that first. And I think everyone is feeling eager and excited and dedicated to really giving the programs like a really, a really hard look, and some of us are very critical, so we're going to look and say, I don't know if that's going to... So everyone isn't just ready to give it a pass. So I think everyone's very motivated, everyone's very eager to get in there. We have a couple of days that are set aside, you know, some time, so that teachers can look, and people are asking questions like, can I look at this, you know, on my own time? Or is it okay if I log in? It's like, yeah. So people really want to make sure that we're giving it a really thorough review so that we can make sure that we're making the best decision. Early on in the process, one of the tasks that the teachers were given was to inventory everything and kind of go through and, you know, make that list and, you know, uncover everything. And the teachers realized that, you know, the teachers are doing fantastic work with the kids, so many wonderful things are happening, but I think it was eye-opening for just the whole group to realize like, okay, like, we see that, and do we have an assessment? Do we have a tool? Do we have a program that is specifically targeting maybe oral language skills? Or that's specifically dealing with some phonics or some phonemic awareness in the upper elementary grade? So it was a very, it was a very good process for the whole district to go through so that we could highlight those little areas. We can recognize all the things that are going really well, but I think it was a really good opportunity for us to realize like, oh, okay, yeah, I see that, you know, maybe we do need to work on some oral language skills, or this is what we're using for vocabulary, but is that sufficient? So I think that was the big kind of like, okay, this is good, this is good work, it's important work, and everybody's all in. Oh, I know, so...
How are you feeling about where you are in the process? Are you far enough along where you guys want to be?
Well, just, you know, educators, it's never fast enough. Everyone's like, okay, you know. So I feel like we're at a good place because everyone has their task, everyone is clear with what needs to happen, and, you know, we're going to go through the process. People don't want to be rushed, it's kind of a balance. People don't want to be rushed, like hurry up and pick something, but they also want to get in and do the work. And so I feel like we're kind of at the early stage of really reviewing everything, but I think we're at a good point, where people have the opportunity to, you know... Everyone is clear with what needs to happen and, you know, we're gonna go through the process. People don't want to be rushed. It's kind of a balance. People don't want to be rushed, like hurry up and pick something, but they also want to get in and do the work. And so I feel like we're kind of at the early stage of really reviewing everything, but I think we're at a good point where people have the opportunity, you know, the box has arrived and people have access to it, we have passwords and logins. And so now I think we're at that place where it will start moving forward. Looking at the programs and then doing that self-reflection of what we have and then, you know, make that informed decision.
I'm glad you guys are doing this. I'm glad the district is doing this. That's all I have. Thank you all very much. I love these.
Can I ask them to help us out with a couple of things?
Yeah.
Because we've been talking a lot about the shifting nature of our work and you guys kind of hit it straight on tonight. But maybe a little anecdotes or some stats if you have them at the ready. So we talked about Earl and Sale would be very different than, we didn't do those programs right years ago. And the result was kids would go someplace, a lot of times profile would go someplace else from education. What's the basic profile change of those kids?
Sure.
What do they really have? You say a Sale kid, an Earl kid.
So I'm an Earl teacher, so I can speak a little more succinctly about that. But what we're really, you know, the intensive reading and language program, it's for kids with language-based learning disabilities, dyslexia. They're right average to above average intelligence. They have all of those receptive and expressive language skills, but for some reason, they're not learning how to read. And, you know, I feel very determined and focused on finding these kids as young as we can because what we don't want is to have them struggle and start to think that they're not smart or they're not capable. So Earl kids, again, we have the second and third grade program, fourth and fifth grade program that travels up to the middle school. And so that's just kind of Earl in a nutshell, you know, language-based learning disabilities, dyslexia. We have a lot of assessment tools that we use to screen the whole student body. And so we're able to use that data and start to look and identify some kids that need a little more intervention. We have a great RTI program. And so from there, we're able to watch the kids and make sure that we're intervening when it's appropriate. Because it is a sub-separate program, so we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're not having kids go to a sub-separate program if they don't need it and if they can best be served in a co-teaching or a inclusion model. So that's Earl. And Sale serves students K through five, social and academic integrated learning. So probably a little bit more kids who maybe have Asperger's, autism diagnosis, and are struggling in the classroom, but need that extra layer of support beyond academic needs. And so the Sale program has just really grown so much with the teachers and also their trained TAs that are able to provide the kids with that in the moment because that's really what we want, for kids to be able to succeed in the classroom, but then have access to whatever supports they need, whether it's, you know, from a TA or a tutor or their general education teacher, a special education teacher.
So a question came up, I don't know, a year or so ago about our teachers teaching special education students. And Allison was here and was able to answer that and say, actually, our teachers are specially trained to help these students, or so that sometimes some of these programs where we would traditionally have sent them. So I just wondered if you could speak a little bit about what's different about the teachers who are teaching these two programs and, you know, the qualifications and kind of training and continued professional development required?
So one piece that really is important, and I think it's also the community, connection with their peers, helping them realize that, you know, because you're maybe having a difficult time learning how to read, it doesn't mean that you're, you know, you're not gonna be able to stay at this school anymore. So I think that one piece of realizing like kids can be, you know, we can keep the kids here in district. And I think that is really positive for the kids. The other piece about the teachers, I mean, the teachers are certified special ed teachers. We have reading specialists. And another really important part in the Earl program is the kids have one-to-one reading tutorials because what we want to be able to do is differentiate instruction that meets that child's needs. We're not just pulling a group together and saying, okay, we're gonna have a small group, and once we hit four, we'll make another group. So the instruction, the teachers are certified. I know the teachers in, one of the teachers in the Sale program actually has her OG, I don't know what to say, like OG something certification. And so it's targeted instruction. It's not just when you come to, you know, the Earl program, you're gonna get this, that, and this. We're gonna look at the students. The reading specialist in the two, three program is also a speech-language mythologist. And so that oral language development, vocabulary development. So what we're really able to do, because we're a small team that really does work well together, is target instruction to meet everybody's needs. And so I think that's a little bit, that's a big benefit to us because we're small. And so then we're able to kind of see the whole big picture where I know what's happening with all of the kids in Earl, even if they're not the ones that are right in front of me. And it's through communication and all of that flexibility and who has this, or I think that's a big benefit.
Calling to her own horn, but we recruited her from Landmark and she supervises teachers at Landmark. And we recruited her over to build the program at the initial stage.
One more kind of co-filing question. So we're talking 10-year span, eight-year span, mobile crisis unit, 51 A's. Free and reduced lunch numbers, what do they look like? I don't need exact numbers, but what were they like then versus now?
Free and reduced lunch was hardly anyone. I remember when I first started, it wasn't even a mention. And that was back, what, 22, 23 years ago? Now, I think Avi is at 17% of the district.
79%, I would say, 79, that range. I have to look that up.
I think it's a different group, I keep saying that people, like things have really changed.
But is it, so when we talk about diversity of learners, is it because we're more conscious of the fact that there's a diversity of learners and that we're, as a society, we're more conscious of need where before we kind of didn't really pay attention to it? Is that it, or has the demographic really changed in our communities?
I think the, I think after the recession, you know, a lot changed. I think you see a lot more, so the family dynamics are a little different. You see a lot of families where mom and dad are both working. Where I remember when I first got there, it was, it was just a different, it was just a different. Our parent population now is just very, it just has a different atmosphere to it. I don't know if that's the right word compared to, you know, 12 years ago. And so, you know, one of the teachers today at the ELA task force committee was talking about how, just how it was different back then, you know, and how, you know, kids getting support at home is more challenging now and mom and dad, you know, both work, you know? I know it's, you know, it's, my wife and I struggle with it. We, you know, we both get home after a long day and maybe, you know, it's 9:30 and they need help with their homework and, you know, the math is, getting up there a little, you know, a little challenging and honor is a great math, you know? So it's, you know, it just feels like it's a different dynamic.
I'd kind of tap into the mental health issues that we're talking about. So when you talk about the ECLC, when you talk about even the cultural proficiency question, in most cases, what the commonality is, is still struggling to help our own communities understand the diversity we have within it before we get it to a global scale. And I think struggle, understanding the burdens that people are carrying into schools. So I'm just curious in terms of, like, how many times have you had the global crisis unit this year?
I mean, I would say that over the years, it's definitely been an increase, an uptick, whether, again, it's anxiety, it's stressors, it's depression, it's, you know, we're seeing lots of mood disorders. So there's definitely been an uptick in it. How many this year have we done? No, I mean, it's, the numbers aren't outrageous, it's two or three, you know? So, but is that different than where it was five years ago? In a community like Manchester, I would say yes, you know? That's, we've seen an increase in that. Which is why I think we're doing, you know, with the help of Allison Collins, we're doing a great job in terms of building those connections with late in global crisis and really having go-to point people to call in emergencies. So I think that's helpful in making those connections.
I'm gonna throw it down to the person who has to manage it all. So we have a lot of specialists here who are doing fantastic work. And they have background in mental health, they have background in nursing, you're a specialist in reading, but you have a class of 22 students, all of whom may be visiting any of these specialists for any varied needs or maybe in the Sale program. How has that changed in the past 10 years for you? What is life like in the classroom today?
I see a lot more anxiety in kids. I think that's, it's an epidemic, really. I'm not sure why. I'm sure there's some science behind it. But that, to me, I think is the biggest difference that I've seen. That being said, as far as all of the different programs and so forth, I think I actually host the, on the homeroom for our Earl program. So I have four students who come into my classroom in the morning. We do our morning meeting. They go, luckily, they're next door this year. And then they meet us for specialists and lunch and recess. And Colleen started Earl in my fifth grade classroom seven years ago, eight years ago?
Eight.
And that was a much different feel. I mean, she would come in, we would try to do some co-teaching lessons. The kids who were getting that instruction, I would say that they were obvious who those kids were. And while these kids are obvious because they leave the classroom, it's normal. You know, they are absolutely part of our classroom. Nobody, there's never any discrimination or judgment from our students. And I think it's because we've started to lay the ground earlier and we've coached the kids who are going to these other classrooms, the reason why they're going there, so they're more confident. I think once they're there, they're getting the, they feel better about themselves. So they're not, they don't feel bad about going there. And so I think the culture of that acceptance within these programs has been, is a big difference.
What's it like in terms of planning and delivery of core instruction? They have so many variations.
I, in a mental-
Just how do you plan, like, is it harder to plan now than it was eight years ago when you have such a diverse group of learners in front of you? Is it more labor intensive? Does it take longer? Are lessons different?
Um, I would say, you know, I try to, we all try to kind of update our lessons. We're obviously following our standards, but we want to be with the times, too. We want to make sure that we're bringing in what's current in our society and things that kids can relate to. So in that case, yes. Is it more work? I mean, we're always working.
I think where Pam is going with this is that we've talked a little bit here about how our experience in classrooms was the teacher standing in front of the classroom and we were all in rows and we listened and, you know. But education delivery, I think people who are taxpayers and residents, they may not be aware of the fact that classrooms are a very different place than it was when we were in school. So I think that that's kind of where, you were referring to a lot of this, but that's-
I think then, to, yeah, so I'm glad you clarified that. That's a good question. So for example, I teach a math lesson. I have about a 90-minute period. And the first 45 minutes, I will do a whole group lesson. The kids will maybe work on some workbook pages. I'll be working, I'll pull some kids to the side that might need some extra help. The second 45 minutes of that, I put kids in groups and they will go through three groups, about 15 to 20 minutes apiece. And they'll either be working on math boxes or there might be a game that they play. And by the way, these are sometimes heterogeneous and homogeneous groups. I change them up. But typically, when they come to my station to work with me, if it's kids that are a little bit higher performing, I'll find something that's enriching for them to do during that time. As well as if there's, you know, some readiness for kids that are maybe struggling. I can curtail that time with those kids in order to review or maybe even preview what's coming up the next day. So, no, I mean, that's, you know, four or five lessons that I'm teaching in a 90-minute period. And I would say the same goes for our reading block. We have another 90-minute period typically, we definitely have 90 minutes, five days a week for that. And I occasionally will be doing whole group lessons, less in reading than I do in math, but certainly, you know, I do do them. And then I have, and I know this is typical for fifth and, fifth grade, fourth grade, the older group, that I have four reading groups that I plan for. So based on some of our MACE or FAWSS and PANEL testing, even our own just personal experience working with kids, we kind of put them in groups. And while we're teaching the same standard, we'll find material that will teach those kids at that level, but also in smaller group settings. So the kids are more comfortable reading or talking about what they're reading and being able to take risks a little bit more than they probably would in a whole group.
So every lesson is four or five lessons?
Every lesson is four or five lessons, yes.
And that's probably very, very different. I think we all probably got one.
Yeah.
Same one.
Pam would have liked it.
That's right. Back in my day, uphill both ways, no socks or shoes, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
The Willow tree?
Thanks.
What was the name of your tree?
The Willow tree.
Willow dangang? Maxwell. I thought you were talking about just two. Thank you guys.
Yeah, we'll give you tutorials.
I'm seeing you Thursday.
Yes. Okay, should we do a quick run-through on the budget?
It doesn't have to be all that long, actually.
You don't need to do any slides during that, do you?
Yeah, update and vote.
All right, update briefly, unless you want to, you want to give an intro to the update? Or do you want me to just go straight into some numbers?
I gave them an intro that we were able to-
They would like to run a balloon, too.
What we've, what you alluded to on our finance committee meeting on Friday is that through a lot of Avi's skill with modeling formulas, we were able to, he was able to run through the circuit breaker and identify with greater clarity what we anticipate we'll be able to receive from them this year and next, and then be able to apply that money to this year's budget in a way that helps us to bring down reserves. Also, we were able to have some conversation with the broker and insurance. And through that conversation, I think Avi became more comfortable with what he was hearing. There was more data and we were able to refine the percentage increase in health insurance for the year at this point, which landed us with an additional $100,000, which we can apply to assessment. So if you want to pull up or put up the numbers so people can see that.
Sure, I'm gonna, I'm willing to do that. Sorry, let me grab that. And so I think, to be honest, rather than take time to throw it all up because it's gonna take a little time to switch over to that-
If it's just in the budget document?
Yeah, so they have that. So let me just give a, I think the big highlights are, first, I just want to describe the process that Pam was talking about, why do changes happen, when do they happen, and how do we make this work? I think one of the things you may remember that we talked about back intensive budget season is that we're trying to set a budget at a time so that we can send it to both town owns for their town meetings when we don't really have information. And so we have to do our best to estimate. And the problem with underestimating is that if you send a budget to town meeting and you don't have enough funds to cover the items that are most likely to spike out of your control, you have a problem. And so with, overall, as a district, we've gone to a much more granular process of estimating everything, from people to benefits, to add a district, to utilities, to the whole, the whole amount of spending we have. And that's really a function of just the scarcity of resources. We moved many years ago to doing name-by-name, person-by-person estimating during the tentative budget of all the staffing, that's 55% of our costs, as well as more detailed forecasting on health insurance, where we are year-to-date. And even add a district, which is a name-by-name assessment. But with health insurance, you don't get a final renewal until really spring, right before open enrollment. And every month from tentative budget until then, you're basically, you don't have data. And if you were to pick a number then, the insurance companies would just really eyeball the number because they don't want to take the risk of your claims going south. So at the time, in December, they're saying, you know, you really need to start with numbers of 10 to 15% because we don't know what's going to happen. And it sounds like, how could you put that into the budget? It's way above Prop 2.5. But you really just don't have any other option. And even now that we're bringing the number down, and the number we're talking about is about 6%, we could see that things were trending better. But you only got two or three months of claims data on a 12-month renewal cycle. So it's just, it's not prudent to start with a 6% number at that time because you don't have things to develop. As I mentioned, we get a couple more months of data in. And each month has been validating. I think what we've seen is the plan design change we made for the HRA program has been successful. From what we're hearing with staff, there were some initial questions about how that would work. I think we have not been hearing feedback that has been negative from them either, so that's good. And so I feel like where we are now, lowering the funds and helping to lower the use of reserves and the assessments to towns, it's still not really perfect information. And so really, what we're doing is taking a little bit of an educated leap of faith. So for those who may see the numbers coming down and feeling like maybe that was simple or why couldn't we have done that before, I would say this is part of the risk process that we're going through. And, you know, there's risk with this. And I feel like better about where we're at now, but it's still a leap of faith. So I hope that just gives you a sense of some of the trade-offs we're trying to make. And obviously, if you're too cautious, you end up having a deficit that the towns can't fund. And you don't want to run the risk of making cuts to the program that you ended up not needing. So it's really just that balancing act, and you just need time. And so this is, as much time as we have, we're kind of out of time. And so now we just need to put our flag down. So that's really health insurance and how we got there. On added district, we have never been in a situation where we have made budgetary estimates based on a name-by-name estimate of a circuit breaker reimbursement. And I think that speaks a little bit to the severity of the crunch that we're facing. We need to go to that granular level. I mean, so I think initially, I was a little hesitant to go there. But we started looking at it. And so as time has passed, I think we feel more and more like we understand what we're doing with the formulas. There are changes happening with the circuit breaker program that we've talked about.
And just to clarify, circuit breaker is dollars received from the state in recognition of your high cost special and added district tuitions?
That's only temporary as a result of it does a change of 1 to 4%.
So there's two things. So you get circuit breaker reimbursement every year for the amount of added district tuitions that are above a high threshold. The state expects you to pay for most of the costs. They reimburse about 3/4 of the overage over that high cost. So they take four times the average per pupil spending in the state, or that's traditionally been the formula, and you own that. Anything over that, they might reimburse, subject to their budgetary year, about 75%.
Catastrophic cost, right?
Essentially, yes. And that's every year. But then, Ken, to your point...
Four times the average students across the Commonwealth.
Across the Commonwealth. But the item that you were talking about, there's an additional provision called extraordinary relief, where if you have a single-year spike of 25% or more, you can apply for additional circuit breaker reimbursement just to essentially tide you over for that single year. And so we've talked about the fact that we're expecting to be a candidate for that. And so, in fact, I just emailed the DESE today, you know, indicating that we intend to follow through the process of submitting a claim. And so we are expecting that between, as added district tuitions have stepped up, we've talked about the reasons being primarily around new residents that have come, rather than forecasted changes from what we've seen. As that's happened, you know, the circuit breaker does go up a little bit. You still own the majority of the costs. You get a little bit more reimbursement. So we're now in a situation where we're needing to really forecast for that to close some of the budget deficits. I think it's appropriate. It is another example of a little bit more risk that we take in our estimating process. And I never imagined that that kind of forecasting that I would do would really come down to a situation where we needed that to close that, that to close the budget cap. But, you know, we've kicked the tires a few times. I've even spoken with the DESE in the past to make sure I'm understanding the formulas. And I feel like at this point, the estimate we've taken is one we can live with, and that's prudent. I wish we weren't at that point where we're starting to kind of forecast and embed on things that we're expecting to come rather than things we know. But I feel like it is something that I can stand behind and the school committee can stand behind as well.
So can I clarify that award? So are we applying for that extraordinary relief award?
We're going to apply for it at the end of this...
So we're confident we're going to get it? And that's what we're baking into these numbers?
So we do expect that we're going to get it based on the formulas. And it is not like a special grant where you have to... Basically, the funding is available for districts who go through this. There are some, there is a process. It is not guaranteed, but it is a standard process that happens every year. So based on the numbers, we feel a pretty good level of confidence that we will be able to qualify for that. But, you know, that as well is a bit of risk because we have not qualified for extraordinary relief, I believe, in nine or 10 years.
So that might help our case?
I don't think they look at it that way. They really look strictly at the, strictly at the numbers. So it's not like, for example, MSBA, where they say you haven't had a building project in a while and they have to spread the money around. This is really based off of the calculation. So that's one of the reasons why I feel a little bit better about that.
So with the two positives, so a pickup of $100,000 for insurance renewal percentage reduction and applying $125,000 in circuit breaker still leaves us with a $250,000 gap. So we're not in great shape suddenly. We're just trying to chip away at, we kind of took the lead from our conversation last time and said it seemed pretty split as to whether or not it should go to assessment or to reserve. So at this point, we've just applied one to assessment and one to the reserve pool. And, I mean, we, like Avi said, it's all a calculated risk on insurance, which seems to be moving in our direction. And the same is true. I mean, we know who's in front of us right now for added district placements. We don't know who may be in front of us in June or in the fall of next year. So we certainly try to leave some room in the circuit breaker in case there's a problem coming forward, a financial problem that comes forward to us. So you split the baby? We did. But it's up to you to decide whether or not that's actually how it would want to fly. Like I said, we took the lead from the conversation, thinking that was probably where you were. I love it. How is everyone feeling? Want to do a quick hands-around? Split the baby? Everybody good? The spending rate's 3.8% and the reserve use is 250%.
This makes the reserves a little bit more sustainable going forward.
Yeah, it's 150 of new money from reserves this year. If you think of the carryforward, we used 100 last year to reduce assessments later in the process, right before we closed the budget. And this year, it'd be 150 new. Now, we've given you calculated risk and what the downside could be. There's also a potential that there could be some upside. We're still not clear on the recalculation of the basic circuit breaker number. So there could be a little bit of a bump there. And we're going to continue to look at, is there an efficiency that can be made? Somewhere along, why?
Actually, before we do a straw vote, and I guess I would just ask, because I know Essex was having, Essex had the tighter budget this year with that, I guess, Mr. Grayson or I can't remember the gentleman's name.
Boudreaux, Ben.
Boudreaux. Was there, I guess, any feedback from him during the discussion from your town on, yes, this is, this could be, we'll think what we can get?
Give him a throw.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the budget number, at least, is, it's probably going to show up to Manchester, looks okay. At least in general, early consensus. Obviously, we have to vote on it. But, and of course, the town has to vote on it in the first, you know, Monday in April with our meeting. But my sense is it should be okay.
Breakout on the assessments, 2.94 for Manchester and 3.61 for Essex.
Manchester next.
So Manchester was at 2.76 last year, and they're at 2.94. Both of those numbers are kind of low. You can see them all the way...
So they're still up?
Yeah, still up. The 2.94 that they're at now is, I think, reflects the fact that we've got to get the whole number and the town, each town, to a place that's going to be within the levy limit. The proportionate between the two towns has been shifting a little bit, a little bit more towards the town of Essex as the inputs and the regional agreement of how the money gets split out have changed primarily around relative enrollment from each of the two communities. So, you know, right now, we're at a 3.18% total assessment increase. And generally, over the past several years, it's been between 3.2 and 3.3. Last year, the number ended up when we threw in $100,000 in reserves, which you can kind of see up here.
Can I just, I thought we were at 3.83 for total assessment? 3.18?
3.83 is the total spending change.
Okay.
And 3.18 is the total assessment. And if I stated that in my email...
Nope, I copied my notes incorrectly.
So, so all I was going to say is about the number going up slightly for each town, including Manchester. Last year really was artificially suppressed. The total assessment increase was 2.5%. That's definitely below the kind of sweet spot of where we can manage, where we can manage a level services budget, as we've talked about. We really haven't been at level services. We've been a little bit below that over the past couple budget cycles. And when we threw in $100,000 at the end of the budget cycle as a result of a request because the Essex number had tripped up above their capacity, that really brought the total number to 2.85. So what you're really seeing is a slight increase in fiscal '21. Manchester, 2.76, up to 2.94. And Essex going from 3.02 to 3.6. I think it partially reflects that fiscal '20 number was below the typical multi-year range. That, that's a long way to answer your question.
That's right. Thank you.
This is funny.
Sorry.
So the 100K went to the two towns. Does that end up being the 33.66 split on that? Or is because of the, is that, or should that have, yeah?
Yeah, so, well, a portion of it comes out of the assessments. Yes, I think we said that was the $100,000.
Yeah, was that...
So the $100,000 will be split according to the apportionment. And I can tell you, the apportionment by regional agreement gets finalized in March and voted, sent by the treasurer over. We tend to make sure that the, once the school committee adopts the budget, that the member communities can take a look at the formula because it is so meaningful to them. Right now, we're at 64.35, Manchester 35.65 for Essex. Which is, again, these numbers don't change drastically, but sometimes even, you know, to the right of the decimal place, those numbers can have meaningful impacts in terms of the assessment.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Avi.
Yeah, sure.
Do we need to take a quick poll? Or does everybody feel okay with this? Does everybody all right with the 100 slash 125K split? Shall we take a vote?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, absolutely.
If they do find more efficiencies and we are able to reduce those numbers, well, can we then have a discussion as to where we want that money to go? Or just walk us in?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget, both operating and capital?
So moved.
Do we need to put a number on it?
I would like you for the motion, if that's okay. And I can give you the number. So the operating number would be a total budget of $27,61,314.
Say that again.
That's the 3.82 spending growth over fiscal '20. And then the capital number, which is for debt service, which has not changed since the tentative budget time, is a total budget of $4,415,238.
So, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you. And Maury, thank you for town support. And thank you for Essex's support as well. If you're watching, Ben, thank you.
2.7061, 3.14.
2.7061.
Six, one.
2.7061, 3.14.
Thank you.
Capital is...
I got that. Okay. Let's move on to the Eagles Nest. All right, it looks like we have...
I have just a second to change batteries.
Sure.
Okay. All right, and we're back. All right, let's move on to the Eagles Nest Essex Elementary Playground discussion. It looks like we have got a committee together. Yeah, so last time, we kind of got it all together, and then we pulled up to the vote, and it was like, so, how do we want to frame it? So I just put down a few fast facts on here. I think it represents what you talked about last time. If it doesn't, it can obviously be changed. But it might give you the language for a motion. Okay. And I don't think you need to include everybody who's on it in the motion. I think we could just give it the charge and the budget. Okay.
Am I still swooping around for it?
Oh, oh, see?
I was hoping I was getting...
I thought that was a subtle way of getting rid of it.
You know, we're all saying...
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve moving forward with a playground replacement committee for the Eagles Nest, charging with managing community input, overseeing process for identification and construction of a new playground with a budget of targeted about $300,000, not to exceed $350,000, and compromised of citizen representatives and Essex PTO rep, Avi, Principal Roberts, facilities manager, and a school committee rep? There is an established timeline that is visible here. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries. You want to have a little discussion around this?
Yeah, there's some PTO folks here. I wonder if they actually wanted to, did you make a decision on a person? Or did you want to contribute? You know, you had a meeting last night.
Yeah. Sure. So there was a meeting last night. Carol is the PTO president. Sorry, Teresa Whitman, 8 Lupkin Street in Essex. We did have a meeting last night after lots of discussion behind the scenes, but the board, the PTO board felt ultimately that the best thing to do. We had a couple new people show up last night at the PTO meeting specifically for playground information and wanting to serve and help with that. And so ultimately, the group felt that the best thing would be to put out a call, an invitation to submit yourself for filling this role as PTO rep. And the responsibility would be to serve on the committee and also report back during the, you know, the cycle, the two PTO meetings that would take place. But that that might be a good opportunity to invite people to be more active in the PTO, number one, but also to make sure that a wide net is cast and that it feels very open and overtly and exaggeratedly open for people. So an email went out today by Maggie Morris over at E S to all families at Essex Elementary with a little outline of that. And they have until Friday at noon to submit a little blurb about why they might like to serve. And then the board will hold a special election, and they'll be notified by Sunday. Excellent. Excellent. Moving right along. She's on it.
That sounds terrific. That's great. I'm excited to hear what's going to happen and I'm excited to see what the product, the final product is.
Did you guys get some hope though from listening to Memorial presentation about the playgrounds over there? And just, I know the people were concerned about being unblacked up. I mean, they really made it sound like it really can be.
Yeah, and in the meantime.
Done while you're in the withholding period.
Right, and we did have an interim meeting, a meeting last week. A couple of parents attended with Dr. Roberts to create an interim plan. And some material, you know, brainstorming session happened. Our gym teacher was there and one of the recess monitors and materials were ordered. So there is hope. There's movement.
No moss grows under Essex Elementary. Will you guys move quickly? That's awesome.
And one thing I did reflect here, and I don't intend to take credit for it, but I think the leadership of the committee has already put together a very structured calendar with week by week deliverables and week by week meetings. So it leaves me a high degree of confidence from last week where there was, yeah, we'll be able to communicate with the, there's a lot of give and take, you know, if we do a very tight timeline, so that's good.
Do we have any other public comment before we wrap it all up? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh my gosh, that took a moment. Do I have a second?
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. And thank you.
Thank you.